It stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, that lives in justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of July 18th, 2022. On our agenda tonight, we will start off with a moment of silence, please, for all those affected by COVID, Ukrainian war, and the senseless gun shooting. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have public service announcements, and then we have a presentation from the Sturbridge Fire Department and Police Department. We have department reports, the Building Department, Police Department, Town Administrator update. We have several action items which we will consider and possibly take action on. Appointment of Benjamin Hoffman to the Sturbridge Police Department, appointment of Carrie Sewell. Little feedback to the Sturbridge Police Department as a full-time dispatcher. Sturbridge Police Department comfort dog policy, a one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club, a one-day liquor license again for Hamilton Gun Club for another activity, a one-day liquor license for Deep Roots Distillery for the Harvest Fest, application for 5K race for Old Sturbridge Academy. Main Street Sturbridge, uh, Seven Main Street Sturbridge, excuse me, to review and sign the purchase and sales agreement. And the last action item will be the right of first refusal for 355 Lead Mine Road. Then we'll have old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens form, and then we shall adjourn. Ian, any public service announcements?
Just hope everybody can stay cool with the heat, and I'm sure if anybody who needs help, they can find Leslie Wong somewhere, and she'll be able to help him out with a cooling station or something.
Yes, and usually the library opens too. It's usually posted.
I have none. Thank you.
Um, I speak in the library. I have the 125-year celebration of the Joshua Hyde Library with a picnic on the Common this Saturday from 12 to 3:00. Music by Hep Hazard Jazz. There'll be a raffle, touch-a-truck, lawn games, scavenger hunt, conclusion, BT Smokehouse, Suzie Q's Ice Cream Truck, Rimfield Winery, cupcakes, and more. Bring your own picnic blanket, chairs, and lunch to enjoy on the grass. Now, the, um, next on the agenda is presentation, but we're waiting for the certificates. Chief Grasso has them, and there's been an accident on 84, so we're waiting till we get them. So, sorry to keep you waiting, but hopefully it won't be that long. Okay, we can jump to department reports. Building Department. Mr. Burlingame, good evening.
Good evening to everybody. Um, I'm actually doing the reports for, uh, March, April, May, and June. Um, I'll break them down quickly. Uh, as far as March goes, the grand total for the fees was 11,834. Commercial permits were six, residential permits 25, electrical 37, gas nine, and plumbing 22. Uh, April, um, the grand total for permits was 54. Uh, the totals for the fees were 11,783, commercial permits six, residential 49, and signs, we had 12 that month. Electrical 19, gas four, and plumbing 10. And then, uh, May, we had a grand total of, uh, 22,594, non-commercial, 52 residential, six signs. Electrical permits, we had seven, gas seven, plumbing eight. And then, uh, June, uh, the total fees were 34,687. 65 commercials, uh, permits eight, residential six, signs two, electrical eight, gas permits one, and plumbing permits three. Um, I guess the only thing I want to say about it is, is the way they grow in the fees, it's pretty much standard. I mean, the earlier months, they were less, 1111, and then May, it got busier. We had 24, and then 30, almost 35 in June. So, it would be what expected. As the summer comes, people get busy and they do more work. Um, as always, I broke it down to where we have the ongoing permits. I've got a large list of them. Um, uh, I can go through the list, and some of them, I'll speak more on them than others, because some of them, you've probably heard before. Days in, they're still trying to open that over in back of the pilot. Six Picker and 90 Cheltenham Road, both other cold storages. I mean, they're getting close on opening both of them, but they're not quite there. 40 Edwards Gas, anybody that goes by there, looks really nice. They're coming along. They're working on the inside of the convenience store. The outside's pretty much done, but not the inside. Um, some of these that are listed, they actually just, just closed, so I had them as ongoing. But 413, which is where the old Jimmy D's was, that New Delhi, they're actually, I mean, they're like a day away from opening. Um, 559, uh, Deep Roots, that whiskey distillery, they're like only a day or two from opening. She's actually gonna run her catering business out of there besides having the, the samples of whiskey and selling whiskey there, which is the old Mill Yard marketplace for anybody that's not familiar with it. Um, School Street, where the old Ravezzies was, if anybody's gone by there recently, uh, you'll see the building in the front's changed quite a bit in the back. They've got the newer two-family. Um, it's gonna be, uh, four-family in front, two-family in the back. The old Friendly's, if you go by there, they, they've got, it pretty much pulled apart. They're starting to work on it. Uh, we had two cell towers that, that had modifications, one in back of the pilot and one at 126 Clark Road. Uh, Conal Lodge, right up, uh, where BT Smokehouse is, just up on the hill. They're doing some ramps for accessibility. They're, they're doing a really good job on that. They've just dug it out. Um, 379, the old Santana Bank, they're changing that, as, as some people know, to that Sturbridge Early Learning Center. There's one in town now, now there'll be two. Um, I think it's a good, uh, we all think it's a good thing, because there's a lot of younger parents that don't, doesn't have any way to, to bring their, their kids, and a lot of people are having trouble with it, so that should really help out in that respect. Um, 178 Main, which is, uh, the Plaza where Shaw's and all that is, there's Autozone. Uh, I just signed a permit for the fit-up for, right next to Planet Fitness to the left, 178 Main. Uh, also, I believe that it's 709 Main, uh, F&amp;G Plastics, they're doing another, I say a clean room, it's really a, a connection between two, uh, clean rooms. Um, AV cha- uh, charge stations, they're gonna be doing them in a parking lot at 178 Main. And then, uh, they're just starting to do what they call it, the fix. It's, it's a hamburger restaurant, but kind of like a high-end. Um, they're doing it next to the Holiday Inn, that same area where Panera Bread and everything is. Um, and then I usually list out done commercial projects that we have finished in the last few months. Um, there's a fit-up at 120 Cheltenham Verizon, uh, and, uh, that's done. They, they changed the, uh, the area as far as, uh, their, their shelves and different things, and they cleaned it up and painted it and updated it. It looks nice. Uh, the old Jimmy D's, uh, I've, I've got that on there, which is done. Uh, here's a good one that's, that's, she's got a final, I believe within any, any day she'll be opening up, and, and it's been a while, and everybody's been asking, and I know the time of year when it's hot. 380 Main, Wicked Licks. So, uh, she's got all her signatures, and she should be opening any day for business. Um, Enrico's Market, next to the Marijuana Place, uh, they have their final. Haven't opened yet. I, I think they're waiting to get some product in there, but they should be soon. Uh, Planet Fitness, they've opened up. Uh, I had gave them a temporary, so when I went to give them their, their final, I stopped in, and I was chatting with the, uh, the regional manager, and, uh, he said that's one of the busiest Planet Fitnesses around, so that says something about Sturbridge. It's, Sturbridge is, is really a desirable town by many people. Um, and, um, that Italian deli just below where the old Coppa Stalian was, he just recently opened. Uh, the chief just told me, they actually sold out of product today. That's how well he's doing. So, I think that's pretty good. The place really, really looks nice. It, it, they changed it drastically. The building is just super. Um, some interesting upcoming, uh, projects. Uh, and, uh, our new TA might know about this one, Cadessa, because it's down your way, Smithfield. Uh, there's one in Watertown. It's a Mexican cuisine, cuisine restaurant. It's gonna be located to the far left, um, of, uh, 178 Main Street, and they're actually gonna use, they used to have that Garden Center where you could walk outside. I guess that's gonna be outside dining and stuff there. They're gonna have a bar. It's, it's, it's gonna be a really nice location. Hope, I, I believe it'll draw more people into Sturbridge. It'll be a good thing for Sturbridge. It'll attract, uh, people here. Um, and then 150 Cheltenham Road Interstate Towing. Um, I haven't got the plans yet, but I, I believe now they're gonna move up, if you're going towards Fistdale on the right, where that boat ramp is just before there. I know they're, they're seriously considering putting their, their garage there now. Originally, it was gonna be across the street, and a few things happened, so they changed it to there. Um, all in all, we've been busy. I think Sturbridge is doing really well, and I think, you know, it's just a good town, a good location, and a lot of people wanna do their business here. So, that's my report.
Okay, Nelson on the Mexican cuisine, you said outside dining?
They wanna have outside dining. You remember, Mary, where they used to take, and I, I think they had like their, they used to have a fence around it, and they had their fertilizer and stuff like that. Yeah, right there, they, they're gonna do it.
And you mentioned alcohol?
They talking about a bar, too, yes. Yes.
You'll have to come before us for that.
Yes, yes, yep.
And planning board for the...
Say that again.
And planning board for the whole kambu.
Yes, yep, they know, yep. Yes, they, they're, they're aware of what they're gonna do.
Yeah, sometimes people are aware, but they don't carry through.
Yes, that is true.
Okay, any questions on Nelson's report?
I just had a quick question on Lucky Mart there across from Kahula. How, how are they making out?
I guess they're, they're just about ready to open those pumps. He did talk to me the other day. If he can get the pumps all set, fire signs off on the pumps. I mean, uh, we'll, we'll let them open the pumps. We just gotta be careful, Chase, because you know how they've got that left side. In addition, the problem is, 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 uh, National Grid, they can't get them to move that big line overhead, and they have to move that to do the building, because the roof literally is gonna hit the wire. And they're having a real hard time to get them to move that. But I think the correct thing, I'll give them a phase permit for the other part, and for the store. And the back's, um, just about down the back of the store, so they could be using that. And then we'll just make sure it's cordoned off the other part, so nobody can get in there, put a fence up, whatever, just like they have now, but over that area. So, I mean, we're working with them, because we do, you know, we wanna get them open.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Anything else? Do you have anything else for us, Nelson?
No.
Okay.
If I could just, just follow up, I think one of the things that becomes evident with Nelson's report is just how much activity there is, and how many new businesses, and all different types of businesses and activities going on, whether it's hotels, small retail, restaurant, gas stations, whatever it might be. One of the things that we are starting to work on is creating almost like an ombudsman, uh, with, using Terry in Economic Development as a first stop, so that this question of people are aware, but do they follow through? Obviously, major projects would still go through Gene as a, as a, as the first stop, but anybody looking to open a business down the road, what we'd like to do, and we're working on with Terry, and I have him trying to formulate a plan for this, is basically an ombudsman, a first stop, first-stop Sturbridge kind of thing, where someone says, I think I wanna open a, you know, a, a bird feed store. Well, how do I start?
Bears.
The bears. I wanna feed the bears, so I need to have bird feed. Um, and so, you know, where do I start? What permitting do I need? When do I need to go see Nelson? What do I have to put in front of the planning board? And even, um, starting to look at databases, gathering databases of retail space available, um, and the different costs per square foot, so people can shop. We would certainly not recommend where people go, but we could give them almost a shopping list and, and help them. So, I think, why I bring it up in conjunction with this is I think Nelson's list illustrates the, the need. Um, and we don't want mistakes. We, we had with Wicked Licks, she, you know, had Michelle not happen to just catch that she hadn't come through. That could have been somebody put off for doing business for, for weeks, and this time of year, that's critical.
Money.
That's a lot of money. It could make or break a business. So, uh, we're, we're gonna look to go that direction. So, I just want the board to be aware of that.
Thank you. Nelson, have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nelson.
Guys, enjoy. Thanks.
Okay, next we have Chief Dessert and Chief Grasso.
I apologize for, uh, being late. Truck driver. We're here tonight for probably one of the, the best types of news that we can share. Um, and I think this goes to show the strength of the community that we have and the bond that, um, everybody in the community shares. Uh, and let me just, you know, set it up with a little bit of background. Um, May 12th, we were dispatched to a structure fire at 5:51 PM at 90 Hall Road. For those of you who don't know, 90 Hall Road is a multi-unit condo slash apartment complex, um, just in from Route 20. Um, dispatched for, to, to a, uh, structure fire. On arrival, the first arriving officers observed four individuals, uh, which they later identified as, uh, employees of cruise control attempting to put the fire out with extinguishers, uh, and also knocking on doors, trying to alert other occupants to get them to, to vacate, to evacuate the building. Um, as a result of, of those actions, um, we believe that they not only, um, helped preserve the property, but possibly saved some lives, definitely prevented some injuries. Um, and we think that because of that, uh, selflessness and disregard for their own safety, they deserve to be recognized. And this is not something, in fact, I think for me, in my five and a half years here, this is the first time we've ever done this, so, um, it shows how special it is. Have you ever been involved with, um, a, a citizen's?
Citizen record.
Yeah. So, um, I'd like to call up Corey Metzger, David Morris, Michael Murray, and Sean Murray, and have them recognize, um, Town of Sturbridge Certificate of Appreciation is hereby presented to each of these, uh, individuals for their efforts in protecting lives and property at 90 Hall Road on May 12th, 2022. It's signed by myself, the Chief of Police, and the Town Administrator, Robin Grimm. So, Corey? We'll get a, we'll get a picture of all you guys, too. David?
I apologize, I haven't got a chance.
Michael? So, guys, thank you very much for, for all of the help.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Couldn't read it first. Okay, next we have Department, Police Department, Chief Dessert.
Good evening, everyone. We present in May and June's report. Uh, we'll start with May. If you have any questions, you can just let me know. As you can see, our calls for service continue to rise with 2,440 calls in May, uh, with about 76 arrests slash complaints. Bring us up to 306 for the year then. As you can see, most of the numbers are increasing with our calls for service, but I'll bring you to your attention down to the bottom, where you're gonna see our mutual aid requests continue to rise, becoming concerning. I have, uh, 14 calls for mutual aid for the month of May, and that's a call on other police departments, Springfield and Whale Sturbridge, I mean, Southbridge State Police, to come answer our calls, because our people are tied up on calls. Bringing us up to 79 calls from, uh, mutual aid for the month of May. Department operations, business as usual there, nothing major to report. Training, the same. Continued our boat patrols, um, which is very well received by the Lake community.
Have there been any citations?
Um, there's been, there's definitely been no citation issues. A lot of inspections, completed safety inspections. Uh, we did get one complaint, believe it was in May, for, um, some drive-ins, but however, the people were able to get, we didn't have the boat in the water, so they were able to get out of there before we got there. But, um, for June, 2,274 calls for service, bringing our total number up to year, 13,944, with 365 arrests for the year to date as of June, and 59 arrests for the month of June. So, that's, those arrests slash criminal complaints. And, you know, you can see the rest of the numbers continue to rise and back down to mutual aid. About halfway through the year, we're up to about 100 calls, 97 calls for mutual aid for other towns to come in to assist us. Um, for operations, we had a great public safety day at Tantascua Junior High. Actually, Robin, it was her first day. We went up there, and we had the state police up there, uh, Holland Police, Sturbridge Police, and we're displaying equipment. The fire department was up there. It was very successful. Uh, Lieutenant Bateman and Sergeant Forty Year and Officer Dana went to Fort Devens, and Officer Dana received a MADD, MADD Award for his, uh, his public safety, um, traffic enforcement. Uh, we worked with the rec closely. Our school resource officer's on a common, and had an end-of-the-year town common, uh, party with, and that was a, probably the biggest display of, uh, people that I've seen on the common since I've been here. It was very, very well attended. And something I'm very proud of is the Sturbridge Police Department took first place in the New England Associations of Chiefs of Police Community Policeman Award for 2021. For 2020, we took second place, so we entered again this year, and we came in first place out of all, all New England for a department with a community under population of 10,000. So, that was a pretty, pretty big achievement. We won't see that again for three years, because we're not allowed to enter once we win for three years.
Oh, that's not fair.
So, maybe in four years, I'll be back with the, the winning. Um...
Be practicing.
We did 16 boat inspections, and I gotta give Lieutenant Bateman credit where credit due is. He, he is the one that put together about a 14, 15-page application for us to get entered into this, put the photos together, put everything together to enter us into this contest. So, uh, credit to him for all the work that he put into that. Training continues as normal, high priority for us, and I think that's about it for, for May. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. For June, I'm sorry. Mayor June.
Mayor June.
Chief, I just have a question. Looking at the incidents and the arrests, what differentiates a simple assault as opposed to aggravated, aggravated assault?
So, if there's a weapon involved, or the, the extent of the injury may change it from, uh, uh, more a felony opposed to a misdemeanor. Somebody just punching somebody might just be a, uh, misdemeanor. Not arrestable if it doesn't happen in a police officer's presence. That would be a summons. However, if the felony kicks in with this weapon, a shot foot, whatever the case may be, the officer then can make an arrest based on probable cause.
Okay, thank you.
I had a quick question. I was on New Boston today, and I saw stationary speed. Is that, is there any more going up around?
Yeah, we, we actually wrote a grant for that. We got, I think, four of them now through the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. So, part of our grant was $5,000 in equipment, $5,000 for speed enforcement, for overtime and stuff like that. So, we're trying to put them up in the areas that have the most amount of complaints, and we also, they, those signs also capture data, so we can find out what times we should run, um, concurrent with, with the sign, run some radar with the sign, because it may say it's between 3:00 and 5:00, you're getting the most amount of traffic and the most amount of speed here. So, this is where, when you really wanna be up here. Same with our white trailer that you see out with the word. That actually captures speed data, too.
Yeah, they were nice.
I noticed the one on Cedar Street, too.
Yep, yep.
My question, I had, I had two. Um, on the mutual aid, how many calls do we help other towns with, or is it becoming lopsided kind of where we're at?
It's definitely lopsided. Last year, my numbers are correct, we, we responded out of town to help other agencies about 15 times. They respond to us 14 to 18 to 20 times a month to assist us. So, I did look at those numbers, and they're not consistent. And matter of fact, this year, if you look at the last one, we're up to 97 calls that we're calling other people, and it's gotta be clear, these calls are not, hey, can you come over and do a lockout, or get my cat out of a tree, or anything like that. This is, we are at an emergency call, and then there's another emergency happening at the same exact time, but our people can't, maybe a domestic, they can't break away, or some type of call where they can't break away. That's when we'll call mutual aid. Other calls, we can stack up. Hey, I need my car unlocked, or does it pass assault, or something like that, that we can say, okay, we'll get there when we can. These are calls that need immediate assistance. We're not, we don't want a delayed response.
And then, um, as far as, we funded a mental health professional for you? Where you're at, where you're at with that?
So, we, um, that was actually a grant.
Grant money, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Through, uh, DMH, Department of Mental Health. So, we just finally, they had to go through the advertising, because they're not employees of us, they're employees of Riverside Community. So, Riverside had to do a, a month or two advertising for that. We got to interview them. I interviewed one of the clinicians two weeks ago, and she, we were just told this past week, she accepted the job. So, now she goes into training through Riverside to learn their data and all that stuff. She's a master clinician, so, uh, we're expecting her by August. So, she'll be coming in, she'll have an office, she'll be attached to the Sturbridge Police Department, a full-time clinician, and, uh, we're gonna continue to apply for that grant. It's new, we might hit some road bumps along the way, but, uh, I'm sure we'll, we'll figure it out and make it work, so.
I thought that was great, so I'm looking forward to seeing it.
All right, so I am very pleased to, uh, ask Benjamin Hoffman to come up and have a seat. Benjamin is coming to us with 22 years of law enforcement experience. He holds a Masters of Science in Criminal Justice from Western New England College. He's recently served as a sergeant with the Madison, Connecticut Police Department, and he's re, actually, he recently retired. So, he's retired and coming right back to work, I think, with two weeks ago, was he officially done somewhere around there? So, he enjoyed his two weeks of retirement, and he's back at it, so, starting tomorrow. So, uh, we did do a thorough background check on him, pre-employment physical and psychological evaluations. We did also go through the Municipal Police Training Council post to get him post-certified in Massachusetts, which is new for us. So, he is a certified police officer in Massachusetts already. He completed all the detesting and everything that needed to be done on that end. So, therefore, I bring to him, to you tonight, recommend that he be appointed as a full-time police officer effective July 19th, with an hourly rate of 35, 39, and the benefits of a three-year employee-excluding longevity.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman, would you like to say anything?
I'm just very happy to be here. I'm very excited about Sturbridge. Like the chief said, I've been in Mass for the last 10 years. I've served a few other agencies before that. Um, so this is much closer to home. Uh, just by listening to this meeting tonight and, uh, things I've talked to people about, it's a great community, and it seems like you guys are, are doing a lot, growing a lot. Um, people seem very friendly here. My family and I camped here last week, and we had a blast, and the people were great, so.
A wedge camp?
Right, uh, the, Lee?
Pine Lakes?
Pine Lake, oh, nice one.
Yeah, very nice. Had a nice little cottage. Felt like home away from home, so.
It's not really camping.
No, no. We did get a bad, we did lose power, though. We got a bad storm, so we lost power, so.
Now, where is Madison, Connecticut?
Madison is on the shoreline. It's, it's, um, it's the furthest east in New Haven County. Um, right, it's, it's 3X off of 95, about 20 minutes east of New Haven.
Are you gonna be moving closer, or are you staying where you're at?
No, I'm, so I'm actually closer to here than I am to Madison.
Where we were before.
Yeah, so it's about, it's about 35, 40 minutes from here.
He lives right in Mansfield, Connecticut, right, right at Yukon, like.
Does it begin with the... Does it begin with the?
Yes, right, right around the fifteen-mile mark, right.
Is the crow flies?
Yes, yeah.
Not who's driving on the road.
Order of border, yeah.
Just thirty-two to eighty-four. It's a nice, easy ride.
I'll make a motion to appoint Benjamin Hoffman to the Derbybridge Police Department as a full-time police officer effective July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at an hourly rate of thirty-five, thirty-nine, and the benefits of a three-year employee excluding longevity.
Second.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Earl, where does that put you with vacancy now that he's hired?
Right now, zero.
Picture?
Your fully staff.
Would you like to do a family picture?
This is actually funding detective's position that was added, so this will be our twenty-first full-timer, our first increase in ten years for a full-time officer, so.
Step in the right direction.
Right now, we're doing good.
We're gonna get a family picture? You can be in it, too. Yeah, chief should be in it. Congratulations.
I'll get to work.
I already got a little lesson in listening to the difference between the felonies and the misdemeanors.
All right, we got another great appointment coming up. Bringing forward to you, Carrie Sewell. Is that how you say it, Sewell? So we're fortunate to have Miss Sewell coming to us. She is an experienced emergency dispatcher, which we don't get very often. She's coming from the Mass State nine-one-one Division. She works for the state, state police, and prior to that, she was a dispatcher for the city of Springfield. So she's got all the qualifications that she needs, with a, with a few minor things that will get her here when she comes in, as far as how we, we do our, our dispatching. But she brings to us a, a great amount of experience. I'm, I'm excited to get her on board, and I recommend that she be appointed a full-time dispatcher effective July twenty-seventh, with an hourly rate of twenty-eight, twenty-eight, and the benefits of a three-year dispatcher minus longevity.
I only have a sheet, yeah. I just had this sheet. Yeah, I don't have like a hard copy of the resume or anything.
I have one, I have an extra one here if you would like.
I have Facebook. Did she have anything to say? Okay, yeah, I'm good. Nope, I'm good.
Uh, sure. I just wanted to say thank you for having me here. I'm very, very excited to start, and as he had said, just listening to you guys talk about how passionate you are about your citizens and the city and growing, I love that, and I'm happy to be a part of that. But yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I will move to approve the appointment of Carrie Sewell to the Derbybridge Police Department as a full-time dispatcher effective July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, at an hourly rate of twenty-eight, twenty-eight, and the benefits of a three-year dispatcher minus longevity. Second.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Okay, now we're up to the police department comfort dog policy.
Yep, I'm presenting to you tonight a comfort dog canine policy that I'm trying to get together. Right now, we don't have the funding for it, but as you know, with the, the mental health crisis that I bring, I'm bringing clinicians in, we're always looking for new strategies for responding to the types of calls, and various different ways to de-escalate situations and foster positive interactions with students, residents. It's my goal to have a comfort dog come in, be assigned to the Burgess Elementary School, School Resource Officer. I've met with the superintendent, I've met with the principal, they're on board to have this. It would not just be a school canine. If there's other crises going on in town, the, the dog would be deployed accordingly. Anytime there's a mental health crisis in the dog, we think the dog would be useful, we would do it. I just went two weeks ago and looked at some dogs up in Walpole. We're looking at a twenty thousand dollar price tag with the training, the dog, and everything to get it up and running. The initial setup fee, having said that, I'm looking for alternate funding through D.M.H. I'm looking for alternate funding for possibly setting up some donation, a donation account, but I think it's gonna be a great asset to the community. I think the, the students would, there's a lot of students that would probably really enjoy it, and I think assigning it to the school resource officer would be very beneficial to, to the students and teachers alike, and hey, probably even our police officers when he's hanging around the station, or she's hanging around the station. So I wanted to get the policy in place, so when the opportunity does arise, I can just move, move forward with the project.
He had read this before, discussed the rule.
Sounds like a great idea.
In my experience, from what I've seen, they're extraordinarily successful, and for officers as well. It seems that everybody kind of gathers around the dog.
Not me.
And I can tell you, it's good for just general camaraderie, as well as investigating if you have children who are victims of crimes or domestic situations, the dog just does do one.
One thing I am gonna try to do with this, this particular comfort dog, is you can cross-train them to be search and rescue dogs as well. So if somebody's lost in the woods and you need to deploy in that, that way, that's included in that one package from this company that, that does these dogs. So I think that would be something that, it's an extra, obviously, a lot of extra training, time and commitment, but save one person in a rescue, paid for itself, a successful program, I'd be happy.
Everybody should be cross-trained, even the dog.
Especially if you're looking for a kid, and they've all met him before, you know, it works out great.
Right, and it's, you know, there's gonna be some type of lab.
Yep.
Dog, I forget what the, the name of the lab is, but it's a lab dog.
To approve the policy.
I will make a motion to approve the Derbybridge Police Department comfort dog policy.
Second.
Thank you. I think that's it for me. Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, it's always good.
Okay.
Do you wanna do, do you wanna go back to town administration?
Yes, I was gonna be, before we do the licenses.
Yeah, it's up to you if you want to do it.
Do that. Oh, well.
So just quickly, a couple of things that we're working on, other than what you have on your agenda. The board brought up last time the questions about the senior work-off, senior and veterans work-off. So working with Leslie and, and our tax assessor and our head of our senior programs, and they're working together to look at the policy, revise the policy, coordinate it a little bit better. There seem to be some conflicts, things that aren't resolved. What if there are two veterans at home? What if there's a senior who is a veteran? What if it's a senior and a veteran? So there are some complications on some of that. And then also looking at, there had been some talk that people could have so much work off the tax bill, but if we didn't use it all up, we could have some people have a second person in the house work for more. And then there was some discrepancy whether that had actually been voted at town meeting, so they were digging back through some town meeting books and, and working on it. So the two of them are working on a policy. It'll be for next year, because we already kicked off on July first, so we don't wanna create chaos, more chaos. But, so we are working on that. Secondly, I sent out an email on Friday to all department heads. I want to start tracking all articles from town meeting that, for like five-year, rolling five-year, primarily spending articles, just so we can follow projects, because sometimes you borrow for something in eighteen or nineteen, and it goes off the radar, and people say, well, where is it? Did it get finished? At what point is it at? So I'll be designing a spreadsheet with all borrowing articles, and then basically eighteen to twenty-three, and every year we'll roll one year off, then add one year on. So it's, it, the same concept of fire capital plan, but this is a look back, and basically, just so the public can see what we've done, what we've used, whether it's CPC money, borrowed money, free cash, big ticket items. I mean, I'm not necessarily gonna worry about if we purchased a pool car or not, but the larger ticket items and the major projects. So that'll be a public document. It's something I'll probably put up on the website, and people can look, because a lot of times you'll hear about a project voted, and three years goes by, and someone says, why don't we ever do that? Well, maybe the cost increased so dramatically, there wasn't the number. But we'll have a notes section for where each project is at, and why, if it's not done, why it's not completed, and what an anticipated completion date is. So we're working on that as well.
It's a good idea, because we do, I mean, we go to town meeting.
And you forget, if it goes off everybody's radar.
Just assume somebody's.
There's nothing worse than somebody asking and us going, you know, it just makes people lose faith, I think, you know, so.
It does, and I know, because I put it at the other end, but when someone's like, you know, that project voted five years ago, where is it at? I'm like, ah. And so it's a good exercise, too, because it keeps us all on our toes, and it also makes us take a look at what we actually spent versus what we borrowed. And sometimes those accounts have left, that leftover money on that, that borrowing, and what happens to that, and where that goes, and keeping, just keeping the checks and balances on all of that. Not that anybody's, not that anything's wrong, but it's just, it answers the questions for the public. It's just an exercise of transparency and informational.
Yeah.
Because it does go off our radar, because we're always going to the next five years. But that look back is important, so we're working on that.
Good.
And then what you have on your agenda tonight is, I have started looking at the water sewer agreement, and of course, you have seven main on here for the purchase and sales tonight, which is where, if we were to put a pump station, it would go. We may or may not do that, but the reality is that, as we research that and the need for that, it's probably going to take four to five years before we go to town meeting, get the funding, get the design to work done. And frankly, with the cost of construction right now, I would be hesitant to put anything out for the next year or so anyway. I think we're gonna have to wait at least one, two, maybe three years, depending on what happens nationally, to see what happens with construction costs. So what I'm asking the board to do, I've tossed back and forth some ideas with Southbridge's town administrator, and, and just to see what they're sort of maybe receptive to, and some of the concerns that I've heard that had come back from the board, and, and prior to my coming here. But what I'm looking for tonight is an agreement to negotiate a five-year agreement, because we cannot technically stay on an annual agreement. We have to have something longer term. I don't think three is, frankly, is enough. It's kind of, it's not realistic. We're not gonna have, i-if we decide we need it, it still has to go to town meeting. And again, I don't really wanna borrow for any construction projects right now that we don't absolutely have to do. So I'm looking for authority to enter into a five-year.
I think five years is perfect for right now. I agree with you, a hundred percent.
It's great to give it some stability, you know, for us and for Southbridge. They know what they're expecting, and we know what we're getting ourselves into, so.
I think it's fall. It's coming quickly. So we will look for something fair, and I think there had been concern about capital. Were we basically paying capital for Southbridge instead of paying our own capital, building our own? And at this point, the things that I'm looking at with Southbridge are not capital-related. It's more operational, just a cost for service.
So moved.
That's the way to do it. Likes me to give the words, so that's perfect. Thank you. And I don't have to correct him. And that is it for me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next, we do have the application for Hamilton.
That would be me.
Yes.
Could you, like, give your name, please, for the record?
Lawrence Poucher, I'm the bar manager at Hamilton. So what we do is, I don't know if you remember, we have these two events every year, the Food Truck Festival, which is this Saturday, and then Milltown Show, which is a two-day car show. That's run by Lance, Lance Milltown is the guy's name, hence the Milltown Show. So he does all of the promotion and all that. We just take care of the venue, and same with the Food Truck Festival. So we applied for the one-day permit, because our club license doesn't allow us to do those kind of events, as you know, so. Yeah, there are. So, so we applied for outdoor, I don't know if you remember that, we applied for an outdoor area, and when the gentleman from the state, who's the auditor and the investigator came, he wanted this elaborate fencing patio system, and it was just cost prohibitive for us. We were only open one day a week, so that's why we pulled that back. We are thinking about maybe changing our license from a club to, I think it's a common license, is that correct?
General.
The general? I don't know if there's any available in the town of Derbybridge, but that might be something. Okay, so that may be something we wanna pursue, which would help us get away from those club restrictions. As you know, they're difficult. You gotta be very careful and cautious, and hopefully, we've been doing that as best as we can, but it, it can be tough at times, so. What are the, what are the fees for a, a common? I guess, I couldn't find anything on the websites.
I think so. I'd have to look and.
So that's more than reasonable than, I mean, because we, being, you know, we have the, you know, the Food Truck Festival and, and Milltown, we take in a lot of revenue in those two events, so that would made it more than pay for that type of a, a change, so. Maybe we'll go that way, make another amendment to the, to our, to our club license. There's only two in town, us and.
I think for, for a larger, more sprawling event, though, you would still need the one-day license, because their premise would only be covered by their permit.
Yeah, correct.
It would all have to be contained to your normal premise, so if you have like a large, sprawling car show, you would still need.
Yeah, we would, because what happens is, is that even if you have a common license, it doesn't include outdoor. So when you have the car show, naturally, that's outdoor, and the Food Truck Festival, outdoor, so you have to go and get a one-day special license, right? So we agree with that. I've looked at, trust me, the last two months, I've looked at a lot of regulations and spent a lot of time going through the Mass website, and it's not easy to negotiate.
And it changes constantly, too.
And it changes daily.
Regulations. We're guilty of change.
Yeah, and it changes daily. So that's kind of where we're at. And it's well-run. I mean, the Milltown brings in their own security. No, not yet, anyway, knock on wood. So hopefully, we don't have any. And we've never had any issues at the club that I can remember. There's never been a need to call in the local police.
Should be a busy year. Everything that's happened like that, people have come out in droves to go to it, so.
Hopefully, the Food Truck Festival will be bigger than last year. Last year, we had about eight hundred to a thousand people. So hopefully, this year it's bigger, because it's in the summer versus, we had it in the fall last year, so hopefully it works.
Make a motion to approve the special one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for a car show at twenty-four Hamilton Road, Derbybridge on August fifth, twenty-twenty-two, from two P.M. to one A.M., and August sixth, twenty-twenty-two, from ten A.M. to one P.M.
Second. And I can make a.
Food Truck Festival, which is this Saturday. So it's from twelve to five, and it's just, it's that same area right in front of the Pavilion and Clubhouse.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on the application for a special one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for a Food Truck Festival at twenty-four Hamilton Road, Derbybridge on July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, from eleven A.M. to six P.M. I'll second that.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your time, and thanks for your consideration. Yes, bye now.
You're gonna have good weather on Saturday, that's for sure.
It's gonna be hot.
Yes, my name is Erica Deveron.
I'm Keith Deveron.
Tom King.
We're looking to get a one-day permit for Harvest, well, two one-day permits, I guess, because it's a two-day event, for Harvest Fest. guess, because it's a two-day event, for Harvest Fest. What we would like to do is sell pre-made mini cocktails, which would be approximately that size. We would also do hot coffee and hot chocolate that people could get with and without spirits and sell our bottles, which are corked and sealed. We also are trying to partner with Second Chance Animal Shelter and do free samples of spirits would be, which would be half of this and those would be for free and we would just ask for donations and any donations we receive would go straight to Second Chance. So we're, we have a meeting with them, it was supposed to be last week, but the woman was ill, so it's going to be tomorrow, actually, and we're going to try to partner with them, see if they would be able to bring an animal on site and we could partner and take donations because our whole thing, as you know, is local, so we try to support as many local organizations as we can.
Somebody wants to go. Wait, we didn't have to show up? I think Earl did it. Thank you, Michelle. I think when Earl signs them sometimes, he checks them, but.
I hope this works out well and should because this is the only one we have other than your line.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the application for a special one-day liquor license for Deep Roots Distillery USA for Harvest Fest on the Town Common on October 15, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and October 16, 2022, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Okay, great. All set. Thank you. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Still quite want to think about the fall yet.
I like it.
October, so it's any better than that, right? Apple pie.
Okay, next, we have a request, application for a 5K road race for Old Sturbridge Academy Parent Teacher Scholar Association.
Hi, I'm Christine Vlin.
Okay, could you just sit, please, so your voice gets into the.
Sure.
Let home.
Hi, I'm Christine Vlin. I'm the president of the PTSA at Old Sturbridge Academy. We have been holding a 5K each year. I believe this is our fifth year. We partner with the village and they have approved for us to hold it on October 1st. Our permit, our, excuse me, our route for our run and walk have been submitted to the Sturbridge Police Department. They've already contacted me with their recommendations for detail, which I've already filled out the detail request form. We start the race at eight o'clock with a fun run on the common for the kids. We're offering an alternate, alternative fun run this year, just for any children who may not like to run or are not able to, just to open it up to more kids. And then it follows with our two-mile walk and then our 5K starts shortly after that. And so we offer t-shirts, swag bags, different things for signing up and it's been pretty successful so far. And we do it as a fundraiser for the school.
Questions from the board? No? Anyone want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a 5K road race for Old Sturbridge Academy Parent Teacher Scholar Association for October 1st, 2022, for the hours of 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM.
And do you want to tack on that stipulation from the police department?
That was about the, about the detail?
One detail officer.
With the stipulation of one detail officer.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
You're all set.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Okay, this is Seven Main Street, purchase and sales agreement.
So this is the, this is voted at town meeting, this is the location that we purchased. If we were to do a pump station down the road, if we were not to do that, we could always sell the land or keep it for ourselves. It's viable for resale either way. So this was voted at town meeting, we have worked with the attorneys to review the purchase and sales. The only thing that is going to hold it up till August, the actual purchase of it, was that it needed to have been advertised on the unique property list on the state and with the transition of town administrators, it had not gone up, so it has to be out there for thirty days on the central register and it is now up there and so the closing date of August will be fine.
Okay, so we need a motion then to.
We need a motion and we have the document for signature tonight.
Somebody want to make the motion then to approve and sign the document?
I will make a motion to approve the sale of Seven Main Street for Sturbridge and to sign the purchase and sales agreement.
Second?
Discussion?
Forgot there's only two of us here.
Well, I could jump in. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, next, we have the right of first refusal for 355 Ledmine Road and we do have a few letters from the planning board, conservation, and also an email from the open space committee, all suggesting that we waive our right of first refusal.
I agree with that.
Okay, can you make the motion then?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to not act on the right of first refusal for 355 Ledmine Road.
Any discussion?
I'll second that, yeah.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, old business.
I have none.
I have no.
Do you want to check up on the.
Poplar?
Poplar and football?
I did get an email, but is there any new?
I have not heard of you. Have you gotten any word?
I have not. I, last I heard, everybody was happy.
That was the last I heard, so I presumed no news was good news, so I didn't poke it.
Me, too.
Okay. We hear otherwise, we'll let each other know.
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, we should be looking out and seeing August drills going.
That's right.
And I have no old, new, Ian?
None.
Chase?
No, no.
And I have none. And correspondence? None. Okay, so we have approval of minutes. We have July 5th.
Mary, do we need to approve these individually or can we approve them all as one motion?
No, individually because I have to recuse on one or two and.
That's right.
I think there's one, we don't even have the quorum to vote on it.
Yep.
So the July 5th. Michelle, on page two. Which you used to be real good at numbering the pages. It's, well, it's so much easier for, to find things. Okay, on page two, the top paragraph, the end of the first line says that the opponent was to go back to the planning board and that second back, well, you don't need back again, but in January and that did not happen. There should be a period there and then the next word, a capital letter. And then on page three, down at the bottom, well, actually in the middle, the motion to approve the DPW's work. Okay, under that, you put in the reappointment. However, that should come after the paragraph that begins with Robin Grimm, she was talking about the approval.
Hey, anybody else have anything?
Okay, is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, June 28th. Our shortest meeting ever. Any comments, corrections? Any motion to approve then?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for June 28th.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor? At the top, Michelle, right under B, the second line in the motion, viability slash empty with Sturbridge Fire Department, should be a period, should not be a period and it should just roll right into at a pay rate consistent.
Is this on the 21st?
And on page 10, the motion, second to the bottom, the vote, isn't really 410, it's 401. Abstention is always last. Yeah, there's a couple of places I, I thought I marked them all, but. Okay, does anyone have anything else? Hey, someone want to make a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve June 21st, 2022, as amended.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Can we approve these with, do we have a comment?
That's the one we're probably going to have to hold because there's only two of you. It's not a quorum. Please.
Do I should have it on the next agenda?
Yes, and there's a slight correction, two on page three, again with the vote, middle, Okay, and then we have May 2nd. Again, at the top, Michelle, the, of page three, the vote number.
On the May 2nd one, we just had Mary Blanchett as present and absent.
And the one we just approved?
No, May 2nd, do we just?
Oh, the one.
Yeah.
She's on the list, yeah.
It's in Ireland. Okay, anyone have anything else on that?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2022, as amended.
I'll second that, but can we do that?
Yeah, because my vote is staying, still vote.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, and one abstention. Okay, next, we have citizens for.
Anybody?
Is there any order?
No, just whoever raises their hand first.
Well, if we could all go up together, we're all in the same.
Eric?
How you doing?
Any names for the record, please?
Gary Delonick, 164 Lake Road.
Mark Smith, 186 Lake Road.
Matt Kibbe, 324 The Trail.
Matt Kibbe, 324 The Trail.
How are you tonight?
Hi, Robin.
Sticky papers. I'll take that first one? No?
Thank you. Want to make a?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Just want to take in the minutes, I'll have a, thank you.
A spokesperson?
I'll start off. I seem to be the ringleader. Matt's done most of the research and hard work and I think some of you know Gary as well. So I'm relatively new to the area. My wife and I just moved full-time to Big Alum Lake about a year ago. So one of the things that was really striking to me is that we have some beautiful homes and paying a lot in property taxes on our street, on Lake Road, and the street is a mess, to put it nicely. I mean, it's just a mess. And so I'm sure you guys are familiar and Robin's been kind enough a couple of times to let me bend her ear and talk about it and complain a little bit, but in any event, I, I know that we're not the first people to bring this up with the town and in the past, you know, citizens have been told, well, it's a private road, you pretty much just have to deal with it yourself until you bring it up to code, which would be impossible because you'd have to widen it dramatically and it's private land and you have to buy land and it would be, you know, an enormous expense, if not just entirely impossible. Unless you do that, we, the town, can't take responsibility for it. Now, what's interesting, though, is, is we do know, and I'm happy to say from experience, that when I call and say, hey, we've got some major potholes, people are doing damage to their car, gosh, can you please fill the potholes? We usually get somebody coming out within 48, 72 hours, whatever, and, and that's gratifying. That's nice to see them come out. I talk to them sometimes when they're filling the potholes at the end of my driveway. So, so that's, that, we do get that and we do get snow removal, so it's not like we don't get any services. But what's perplexing to me is just big picture and if someone could enlighten me about how the decision-making works or what precedents there are, but just from a common sense standpoint, I don't get, well, it's a private road, you're responsible, the town isn't going to make it into a passable way and yet it's a public road in terms of access. It's a throughway and, and we have plenty of access. And Robin and I have talked about this and Matt, when he talks about, you know, the peak times tend to be school, beginning, you know, at the beginning of the day and at the end of the school day. And as I've spoken about with the police officer, who was kind enough to call me a few weeks ago to discuss it, at nineteen minutes after two o'clock on a school day, you can set your clock to it, there's going to be a parade of cars coming through, all these seventeen, eighteen-year-olds, whatever, at a pretty fast clip. And so in any event, and if that's the best way to get through, because some of the other roads are more crowded or there's lights that are backed up, I know if I'm a seventeen-year-old, I'm going to take the fastest way through. Okay, there's no question about it. So I'm not blaming those kids. What I'm saying is, is at the town level, can we look at ways to, to reduce the amount of traffic coming through there? And then really, again, I'm a newbie, I'm a new kid on the block, but my understanding is, is when Old Town Way, is that Gary's right? That, that neighborhood was built and that road was built, somebody told me that initially that was planned to be a cul-de-sac. It was not going to be a throughway, it was going to end, but then at the, at the final hour, it was decided, obviously, to, to be a throughway. So that just makes it easier to, for people to come from 148 and, and to come on through and eventually end up on Lake Road. So, I mean, even if, even if somehow we, meaning the town and/or the citizens who live on Lake Road, the residents, spent a lot of money bringing that road up to, well, made, you know, repaved it, it would still be a pretty dangerous road, you know? It's quite narrow and it's got some extraordinarily tight hairpin corners and I understand that road was built. A hundred and fifty. And I understand that road was built 150 years ago, or whatever, when it was horse and carriage, and that's just the history of New England, and, and so, we got to make the best of it in one sense. But, so what we're here for is, again, my, my request is, if someone can tell me, why is it a private road, but it's, but we don't have, we can't tell people not to come on our private road? I mean, I mean, I can't, we can't put up a sign. I've done that before, we owned a ranch out in Oregon, it was 300 acres, and we had some roads where we would put up a gate, say, private road. People couldn't go by it, they, they didn't have a lock to it. We're not looking to do that, I, we couldn't do that. But I'm just confused about that. And then, Matt has some, you know, he presented to you some Jeep, um, Google Earth maps, and some ideas that we have about maybe alleviating traffic and trying to reduce some of the through traffic that goes to other places too, as well as Lake Road.
Okay, I gave Mary a copy, I didn't make enough copies because my printer. And, but I, I will start with the proposal A that I call. And I've lived in this town for quite a few years, and I actually grew up on the lake in some ways. I learned how to swim when I was two years old here. But I know that there's trails, a lot of walking trails, and one of them is the Grand Trunk Railroad Trail that if you go right in front of Sturbridge Village, where their parking area is, I don't mean where the buses park, I mean where you, where the people come in through the lights and, and pull right into the main entrance. Right across the street from there, there's an entry point to the old Grand Trunk Railroad that continues along the Quinnabog River, up on a, on a banking, it's already to grade, all the way to Holland Road, right near the Quinnabog Bridge on Holland Road. And my proposal is, because the traffic is so bad at so, so many times a day, why can't we have an alternate Route 20A that goes there? Same kind of road as Route 20 is now. I think the town owns that land, and could easily expand it in the railroad, but it's already pretty well graded. And bring that over, and that would allow traffic to come from four lanes right at Sturbridge Village, and it bottlenecks right down to one lane either way. And they, right at the lights there, they can go down towards Sturbridge Village and then veer off, I think it's, is it Stewart Road? What's the name of that road in front of the?
Doughty.
Okay, yeah, right there, there's an entrance way to the old Grand Trunk. And that traffic could go right around and come back to 148, and then have dedicated traffic lights, more modern than we have now, that can sense through cameras where the traffic is most dense, and set their timers a little bit longer for that traffic, and stop everybody else. Then move to the next lane. Everybody goes on that one lane, and everybody else stops. They do it in certain parts of Boston, and it works pretty well. And I'm just wondering why we can't do that here. Probably the state might have to get involved, and maybe it's bureaucracy, but boy, would it be better for the public if we could do that?
Well, any traffic lights on 20, it's a state road. We would have no say, other than try to encourage them to do something. I mean, which we certainly could do with our DPW director's aid. As far as the Grand Trunk, though, I'm not sure the town owns all that land. Plus, any proposal, I mean, we're talking a lot of money. But, no one disagrees, the traffic is horrendous. It's horrendous everywhere in town, but particularly along Route 20.
Well, I mean, you know, you're going from four lanes down to two, and then it goes back to four, I believe, you know, as you head, as you head out to Brimfield, and.
No, they just change it one each way, yeah.
People complained.
Oh.
Not everybody.
I don't get out much evidently, but what's striking to me is, is that, is that that section where it does go down to just two, two lanes, and of course you've got the Big Dig, I called it the Big Dig, where that creek, anyway, that's a different story. Is that that's some of the busiest part of Route 20 for miles in both directions, and it goes from four to two. So, yeah, it's, it's, well, yeah, I mean, it's.
They're, they're not just coming up Arnold Road, Mary. They're, they're not just coming up Arnold Road, they're coming up Cedar Street too. So, I mean, even if you mitigate some of that other stuff, they're still going to be back to the point of, and the road's only 20 years old. And my question with the sewer betterment that we've been paying and still pay, is there any extra funds in that betterment fund? When we sewered Big Alum? And I think we have three years left?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so, Gary. I think your betterment was based on.
Initial construction, yeah.
You know?
I could interject on the, the, the suggestions. So, we've had several conversations, and the, the whole issue of the private road and no through traffic, we have tried, you know, enforcement is only so good so much so often. So, that is a challenge. But on the suggestions, after we had met, I get on and looked at the tip plans for the next five years, the, the traffic improvement that the state has. And unfortunately, none of the, I was hoping maybe we'd get lucky, and 148, by some miracle, is listed on, on the tip, and it's not. There is a project for Rotary at 131, which.
In 20?
Yeah, which I'm not sure. I talked to Heather about that the other day, and I, I have a lot of questions about that. And so, I did ask Heather to try to coordinate a meeting for me with DOT. This would be one of the topics, along with what their plans are, in addition to, when I spoke with Jim Donahue over at Old Sturbridge Village, he has some concerns about the jogging handle to get into OSV, and has talked about whether or not there could be left-turn lanes, or the widening in those certain areas to try to, to unbottleneck, if you will, some of that traffic. So, I'm trying to get a sit-down with DOT to cover a whole host of Route 20 issues. We also have a light with Noble Energy. We have a major thing going in there, and the state is saying it's not worthy of a light. So, it appears that we need to have a lot of discussions with the state DOT. So, this is in my list of things to, to take while I have them.
And we're, we're, this is just the beginning of a long process. We understand that, that, that you folks have to understand the situation, and perhaps agree to some of our proposals, and if so, then it has to go through the town system, and then up to the state system, which is a whole new level of bureaucracy. We, we understand that nothing happens overnight, if, if it's, if anything's going to happen at all. All I can say is, again, I'm, I'm new to town, but I've been coming as a vacationer with my wife's family for 35 years. And, you know, Route 20 was, was already backed up in that section where it goes down to two lanes 35 years ago. Now, we've moved here full-time, we hoped to live here for decades, and I can only imagine, as the place continues to grow, it's only going to get worse and worse. So, I'm, I'm, I'm asking that we do some work, you know, whether it's Matt's proposal, or a combination of proposals, we do some work to get ahead of the, or not be so far behind on this.
I think it's going to take, as Robin says, a lot of people working, and particularly, it's not strictly a town decision.
Understood. It's a Commonwealth issue, sure.
Oh, but taking the road over is a town decision, and just to try to get a little bit more granular.
Funny?
No, I'm talking about Lake, the, the issue is Lake Road.
Yeah.
Okay, all these other peripheral roads certainly don't help the problem, but we need to get the town, and Chuck, Chuck's lived it longer than anyone, I've been there 20 years. When we, when we sewored it, the road was great. But that, that school day traffic, school year traffic increases five to tenfold. I mean, it's, it's basically, and you, you don't even say Glendale, because Glendale people go 148. Most Paradise people go 148. So, you really got, you really got Old Town Way and Lake Road, and, and you could have 150 cars in, in, between the hours they discussed, in the morning and the afternoon. So, it's, it walks like a duck, and it squawks like, I mean, it's a, it's a town road, you know, and, and it's getting beat on pretty badly. And, I mean, I, I myself have had $1,200 worth of rim and, and alignment damage done to a vehicle. I know a lot of other people have as well. We've just got to find a way to get the town to take the road, whether it's a joint effort on raising the money to get it up to speed.
Well, the thing is, it has to meet certain requirements, which you know, so, you know, if we started from there and worked with Heather, our new DPW director, you know? And then, what would follow that, though, Gary, is every other road in town, people would be saying the same thing. Because I know the town, the town allocates, I think it might be $6,000 a year for work on non-town roads, private roads.
Basically, filling potholes. I'm sure most of that money goes to filling potholes, yeah. But are, are there other private roads, you know, private roads that get as much traffic as Lake Road? I don't know, maybe there are.
I don't know.
If the town takes, you're probably looking at more traffic. Because it'll be, it'll be a better maintained road, it'll be smoother. I avoid that road for exactly that reason, I'm not trying to drive over it and bust a rim.
We don't have that choice.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, is it, is it a situation where you could make it a one-way, going either, in either direction? And it would create a different traffic pattern, it would stop people from cutting through there, or is it?
One-way in certain hours even.
Or even just, I mean, I don't know if it'd make it difficult on you to get to your house.
I've always asked this, I, you know, I own the road for 400 feet. I have a property on the side of the street. Could I, could I put boulders up across? I mean, I'm sure there's deeded access that.
I'm jumping, my name's Chuck Roy, and I'm president of the Balla Lake Association. And I'm speaking for the members of the people that live on Lake Road, okay? And I know these gentlemen have already told you the problems we're having with that road. And we cannot get a road association together, because many of the property owners feel, well, everyone is using this, and I disagree with Gary. I think people from Paradise, Mike DiRondo and those people, use our road all the time. I mean, there are hundreds of cars going through there. I have a very simple solution, and we have done this solution on other roads around the lake. Put a fence at the end of the road, okay, at Sturbridge Woods. A gated fence, just like you have at the end of Big Alum Road, just like you have over at the end of Paradise, with a lock that the police can get through, the fire department can get through, and ambulances can get through. But, that will keep people from going down and using Lake Road as a cut-through. They still can cut through where Lake Road begins on Paradise, but we can, we can police that. And then, then there, if those people are not property owners, they are trespassing, just like they are on Big Alum Road, and just like with the Rossioli situation, the town police, police, and that's trespassing. So, we can, we can regulate that, we can take pictures of people that are not property owners on Lake Road, take their license plate, and get those to the town Sturbridge Police. But if you put that fence there, you're going to cut down 90% of the traffic on Lake Road. I mean, I hate to say that, because I know a lot of my neighbors use that from the other side of the lake. But, we don't have the funds to keep up with that road. And people are like, well, we, we, we're not going to pay for this as a road association, you, you've got hundreds of cars, you've got students, you've got teachers. So, that's my suggestion, what, what, what would be so hard about putting the exact same gate that you have at the end of Paradise, that keeps you going from Paradise to Mount Dan? Or, there's a gate over at the end of Big Alum Road that keeps you from going to Clock Road Extension? So, it's the same thing, it's the same situation, why not allow, why not allow us to build that gate and put, you know, and then you guys have the key for, I mean, I understand emergency vehicles have to get through there, no doubt about that. But that sounds like a, 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 a simple, at least a first step. Now, at that point, maybe the neighborhood will come together and say, hey, we need to do something about this. Maybe, you know, Paradise, everybody will say, no, this is, you know, and then we can, we're open to talking. But, it's got to the point now where, like Gary says, I mean, I come, I ride bicycles every day, I come down that hill, I'll tell you right now, that is a, it's a death threat.
It's a hazard.
It's just ridiculous how bad it is. And, you know, I know John Argitis, when he, when he was alive, when he first built his house, he's the one who paved that hill. And it's been that way for, oh God, 20 years now, but it's, it's deteriorated to the point where it's, it's dangerous. It's downright dangerous. So, that's my suggestion, what is, what, what do you as a selectman think about that idea?
Well, we'd have to look into it, it would even have to go back to the original plan for the developments up there. You know, what was planned as far as access on the road.
Well, I've done some study, I can't find anywhere where a right-of-way was given to the people from Sturbridge Woods to go onto our private road. Maybe you can find that and show it to me, but I've tried to find it.
You mean Old Town Way? Old Town Way?
Old Town Way.
Old Town Way.
When you say Sturbridge Woods, you mean Old Town Way?
Old Town Way, yes. I cannot find anything where, you know, I've been told, oh, you know, they were granted a a right-of-way over private property, or, you know, or something like that. I, I, you know, I'm like, where, who, who, who granted that? Who did that, sorry?
Private, as a private road?
Who, who, who granted that? I don't know where that came from. I mean, you have this private road, it's been a private road, I mean, and I've lived on that lake, I'm 72 years old, I've lived on that lake ever since I was born. And, you know, where did that come from? Where did that right-of-way for the people for Old Town Way to use our private road? It's our private road, we're the ones who have to maintain it, like any, like Paradise Lane, like, like Mount Dan Road. So, why would they allow that cut-through? And I don't begrudge the cut-through, other than the speed they go through there, by the way. I mean, the speed is ridiculous. I mean, I've tried everything in front of my place, signs. Mark and I have talked about putting in speed bumps, and I did talk to Jeff when he was the town manager, and he said, go ahead, put speed bumps in. Okay, great, you know, I hate speed bumps, but, you know, but, you know, where, where does it say that they have the right to drive over a private road? And I can't find it, if you can find it, I would love to see it.
Well, again, some of those other roads you referenced, on the other side of the lake, they're not through roads, right? They end. So, the only people going on those roads are the residents.
They didn't end for all times. If you go through where the fence is over at the end of Paradise, that goes through Jeff's property, right? There's been a road there for a long time. It wasn't used, okay? So, a fence can, or at the end of Big Alum Road that keeps you from, you know, the extension, you know, I mean, why, why can't we do the same thing? It's, I mean, you keep telling me, and when I talk with Jeff Bridges, he said, well, it's your road. It's your road. Well, if it's my road, then why, why do these people have to get, get to use my road? It's really not my road, folks.
And if we're going to have to pay $200,000 to repave it, I'm picking a number out of a hat, then why should we have to allow everyone to come on that road? Because it's going to need more repairs at some point down the road, I mean, it'll be amortized over a number of years. So, it just comes back to what I was saying before. Chuck's got more history and understanding of the area, but is it a private road, or is it not a private road? Do we have control over it, or don't we have control over it? Are we responsible for it, or are we not? If you tell us it's a private road, we can decide who goes on it, aside from the residents and their guests, then, okay, then we'll have to put our pocketbooks together and see what kind of money we can cobble, and, and get a contractor out there, and have them roll some pay, some ashfall.
Then you get into the Rossioli debate.
I do think we need quite a bit of input from the DPW director. The town does have, and should have, an updated list of the private roads in town, so.
But just like the Rossioli case with the prescriptive easement, the argument, the argument was that for 20 years, and that's the magic number in Land Court, and we would have a case if we wanted to pass the hat and, and pursue it legally, but if you've allowed something to happen for 20 years, call it whatever kind of road you want, but for, at least since the school's been built, the new one, it has become, and, and as Chuck said, the Old Town Way development with no, no offense. That's 25 years, that, that certainly passes the prescriptive easement time, where that road has been used publicly by a, a, a five-town school district, and, and basically, for all intents and purposes, been.
That wasn't upheld in Rossioli.
No, it wasn't, but that's.
Rossioli went back further than 25 years, and, and they, and they found in favor of the Rossiolis.
That case had a lot of.
I know, but I'm saying, that's the argument, that you've treat, you've allowed it to be treated like a public road. Now it needs to be repaired, desperately.
That would be the easy solution, if you guys were to take on, and you know, it might not be 100% of it. Maybe it's some kind of a collaboration between a road committee and the town, you know, as, as Gary was saying, with the betterment. Maybe, maybe we come up with half of it, and you come up with half of it.
The, the problem with resurfacing, and, is that there's actually a bylaw in place, I spoke with Heather about this, that it is clear in the bylaw that the town does not resurface private, refill potholes. So, that's why it's not even just a case of money, there's actually a bylaw on the resurfacing of privates. I think what's more interesting to, interesting or sort of an option to look at is the question of deed, was there ever a right-of-way given to, to, and to town to use it as a, as a pathway? And try to research that. And then, secondly, look at if there is any legal way to gate a portion of it without jeopardizing public safety, which is always the other question for access of public safety.
Well, as he says, you could have a padlock on it, where all, all the first responders would be able to act and get through it.
Have to look at the safety, obviously, the police.
If that's what it takes, I think that's what we do, you know, I mean, and, and of course, what's going to happen, as Gary alluded to, is we're going to put the gate there, okay? I'm going to put the lock on it, just like we see in other parts of the lake. And of course, everyone's going to go nuts, and they're going to say, no, you don't have any right to do that. We have a prescriptive easement, because it's been going more than 20, and we're going to wind up in court, is where we're going to wind up, right?
Well, that's, I'd rather unwind things before.
That happens.
And have every, i- i- if there was a consideration to do that, we'd have to make sure. to do that, we'd have to make sure for all parties, because we don't wanna end up in court, you don't wanna end up in court.
Sure don't.
I don't wanna be paying lawyers to do what we...
So, we're here for some guidance, that's why we're here.
You know, on the bylaws question that you brought up, I don't know what the process is or if it's even possible, but can't bylaws be amended? Can't things be changed? I mean, I'm going, I'm saying, hey...
Bylaws can, town meeting votes bylaws.
So, you know, we're in this for the long haul, we're, you know, we're big, we're big picture and, and I'm talking to my kids about a civics lesson, I'm going to try to participate in, in town, you know, administration and see if we can move things along.
Okay, thank you. What I get now is, we hear you, we definitely hear you and we understand the problem. We need to get a lot of information and a lot of meetings before we can move forward.
Understood, yeah. We knew there wasn't any, we knew all we could do today was to listen to us.
We don't have the answers.
And we appreciate you listening to us and I appreciate Robin, this is the third time she's heard me go on about these issues.
It has started to research it, so...
And I've been quiet, but I sympathize with you guys, there's definitely an issue up there with that road. I've traveled it frequently, that sharp corner going up and I can only imagine when school gets out that it is, it is a nightmare.
And in the winter, it's compounded by nowhere to plow the snow and the road gets even smaller and...
It's a single-lane road and after six inches of snow, no question.
That's kinda, I lived on a road that was a major cut-through in Westboro, Mass. And the ultimate solution ended up being the way that it was most commonly cut-through. People were going from Route 30 to Lyman Street where that connected to Route 9 and basically, that's where everybody was going. So, they made it a one-way in the opposite direction. And it literally, nobody drove through that neighborhood for five years. I mean, it stopped, it deadened its track, so I would think about which way you would want it to go and kinda go, and kinda go down that route.
Right, Jeff, I wanna go back.
Again, it doesn't, it doesn't help you right now, but it may be a third option for your proposals that you had.
Certainly a mitigation option, yeah.
Well, and so you've got three guys who live on Lake Road and so priority number one is Lake Road for us. Matt lives on the trail and so when I approached him, he said, well, part of the problem is all the cut-through traffic and part of the problem is, and he addresses that, you know, at some of the intersections, it could be done, done better on the state routes, routes like Route 20, 148, that intersection, so, but I do wanna just please, Michelle or whoever it is, put into the record that we, at least some of us, tucking for Matt and me, I think all of us, but the whole issue of about Route 20 coming down to two lanes, that congestion, I know that's a big-picture issue and a big-money issue and what's the best way? Is it even possible to put in a bypass or is there some other way to handle that? Can you go to four lanes? I've been told there's...
A lot of land taking...
I've been told there's buildings, there's historic buildings and moving them and I don't...
You think the Big Dig is bad? Imagine what that would be like?
Well, at least there'd be a reward on the end of the Big Dig. The Big Dig's just a hassle with no reward. And Robin says it's gonna go on for another year or more and I'm just scratching my head. By the way, if anybody can illuminate me on what the heck is going on and why it's taken so long, I know it's a state...
Basically, it was a covert, they ran into all kinds of issues with contaminated soil and old chunks of a bridge from the Civil War or something, there's all kinds of things in there.
Yeah, it was not the...
It was a two-week, it was a two-week job when they initially came in to talk to us about it and it has spiraled into a two-plus year? It'll be done next May.
No, it's, it's only been a year.
Oh, it feels like two, I guess, yeah. If you live on Cedar Street, it feels like two.
And what Heather was talking about too, they'll basically have it done, but they like it to settle over the winter before final paving.
Okay.
So, they'll be plowing it like that all winter?
It's improving.
Well, I'm sure the people on Cedar Street and, they must be getting way more traffic than they've ever gotten before.
I live, yeah, I live at 24, right, right at almost the entrance to the school, so I see it. During Brimfield, I'm the major cut-through for all the residents of Brimfield and all the other things.
We're all driving that way, you know, I mean, it's...
Everybody takes shortcuts.
I just...
We wanna give them the least amount of incentive to take a shortcut, right? As much as we can.
I'd say that these proposals I have will help alleviate a lot of their problems, but it's a two-step thing, could do both. But there might be a concern about the merchants on Route 20 saying, don't add another road, we want everybody to come by our place to pull in. You go by that place when it's crowded, I'll never pull in because you never get out.
Yeah, especially if you take a left-hand turn, it's murder.
If you have an alternate route and the people that wanna take their kids home because nobody rides the bus anymore. This is funny, but I'm a school teacher, I know, I used to...
I taught too.
But anyhow, I think that would alleviate a lot of the problem if there's a way that the town could do that, even if it's long-term, work with the state, have a Route 20A like they do in Springfield, like they do in Worcester, as an alternate way to get around for people that don't wanna go to the town merchants and just wanna go home.
And the people that want to go to the town merchants, to get in and out safely instead of having to plan your whole trip around going to the post office, I can't take a left turn, so I'm gonna go all the way around on Cedar and then take a right and then take a right and it's, you gotta, you gotta make sure everything's a right-hand turn at certain times of day on that road.
Well, I do that. I never go left when I come out of, say, Yankee Spirits or someplace, I go right.
Definitely don't wanna go left coming out of Yankee.
I don't know if Gary remembers...
That's a medium stroke.
No, I know, but I meant further up. The, I don't know if you remember, Gary, but years ago, there was the thought of a second bypass. But, again, that was like in back where the host and everything is, it never went in.
We had deaths on Route 20 near All-Star and we couldn't get the state to even acknowledge that that was the most treacherous section of Route 20 in Sturbridge because we weren't in the top 50 of the state, you know, it was, you know, so the, it's a grandiose idea, but...
We're just gonna have to rattle some DOT pages. I've already talked to our state reps as well.
Take the left out of New Boston.
I've already chatted with state...
We're not gonna forget it. We're gonna move.
Like a treehouse wanted to pay. What did the state rep say?
Well, I, I talked to one of the state reps and they will try to, they will stand with us on it.
They're listening, okay, great.
They're listening.
Thank you, fabulous.
They do our state rep we had.
Very, very good.
So, are you guys saying we planted a seed?
Please.
Definitely.
There's hope.
The end of the tunnel. But thank you for coming in and...
So, the takeaway from this meeting, let me just be clear, is that you're gonna do some research, at least you're gonna find out if we can put a fence up there. You're gonna find out what the, what the, okay, that would cut down, a fence would cut down on 60 to 65%, maybe 70% of the traffic on that road, then we would feel more comfortable taking care of our own road. You're also gonna, perhaps, as another takeaway, talk with the town as far as, from a standpoint of sharing a cost-type thing, if that could be done, we would be willing to do something like that. I'd like to leave this with a feeling that, you know, we're gonna move forward on some...
I think the first step is determining public or private, right? And then going from there.
Exactly, and the ability to put up a gate, for example, on something like that, work with public safety, that's the easiest one for me to get an answer on very quickly because it is locally controlled, it doesn't require a town meeting vote, it doesn't, you know, those are the types of things, can you gate that off? What's the viability of that? That's a pretty easy one, that's something, in a matter of weeks, I can get an answer on. The others are your big picture.
And Robin, I've been communicating with our new state senator, Ryan Fatman, and this is ironic because it was an hour ago, we were supposed to chat, he said, sorry, we had an econ development bill thrown at us last minute and I need amendments done by 5 tomorrow. Any economic development projects needed in Sturbridge?
Yes.
So, they're gonna apparently start giving money away.
Yeah, I talked to the other day, lots of different projects too, and we talked about, and I talked to actually David about the noble traffic light in that discussion, so, traffic lights on 20 came to the party in the discussion.
Do you know Ryan? Are you in communication with Ryan?
Yes. Yeah, that, I spoke to him Friday afternoon about this bill, in fact.
So, if no one at this table has an objection, if you wanna use, you have my contact information, Michelle does, so if you could please be in touch with me with more questions, you need clarification, or you've got any news, any news is good news to us, or if you want us to show up at another meeting next month, the following month, just please be in touch.
Absolutely, and...
Well, not any news is good news to us, but...
Hey, getting contact from the town is good news.
If I could ask, just I, because my radar sometimes gets lost a little bit, I'm not as young as I used to be. So, if you could, if you don't hear from me in two weeks, call me.
Will do.
I don't mind being called a heck, I don't call it, I don't consider it heckling.
Can we just add to the agenda an update?
Thank you for your time, we appreciate the chance to...
It's always open.
Can we just add an update on it? Where we're at with it?
Yeah, you can put an update on August, August agenda.
And just kinda make it continuous until...
Yeah, I mean, August agenda.
Old business, right?
Next meeting, next meeting, there'll be an update, so, shouldn't one or more of us plan to meet?
If for some reason, yeah, if there's nothing, I'll let you know ahead of time so you don't waste your time and come, but that'll at least give it on the schedule.
Under town administration's update.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Civic lesson for me.
That's okay, as long as, Michelle, you name an address, we'll find you. Or if you give a phone number too.
It's terrible.
Also, Michelle, on our, August 1st, January, the historical commission, we'd like to